Hey, well. Not everyone went on a.
Okay. I'm backwards, that's okay.
Are you ready?
I'm getting there.
You want me to get started, Ken?
You can start, yeah.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education here at Westminster Public Schools. The time is 6:33. Veronica, can you please call roll?
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Ek.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Present.
Mr. Valenti.
Present.
Alrighty, at this time, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe we have students from Sunset Elementary, Sunset Ridge Elementary, and FM Day. Maybe just one student?
Alright.
I'll stand with you.
We'll stand, we'll sing.
We'll stand united.
Alright, Grant. Grant, your stud.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice.
Thank you, Grant. Alright, moving on, we have the agenda approval. Of motion?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the proposed agenda for the regular meeting dated November 27, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any comments? No comments or questions? Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Ek.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valenti.
Aye.
Fantastic, we have some outstanding minutes.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the regular board meeting minutes dated October 16, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any comments, questions? None, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Ek.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valenti.
Aye.
Alright, we have one more set of minutes.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the executive session and study session meeting minutes dated October 16, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any comments? No comments, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Ek.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valenti.
Aye.
Fantastic, we're moving. Dr. Pamela Swanson, we have your superintendent report.
Okay, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I hope you and everyone else in the community had a nice Thanksgiving, and whether you stayed at home and family and friends came to you, or you traveled somewhere else, I think it's so important to get some time to reflect on what is important and appreciate what we have to be thankful for in our lives. One thing this community has to be grateful for is a Board of Education who works tirelessly to help its community, and in particular, the children of Westminster Public Schools. And I'm proud to announce, we have known for a little while, but now people across the state will know it as well, that the Colorado Association of School Boards has named our Board of Education basically the Board of the Year, the All-State Award, so hear, hear. And we've known that you've been our Board of the Year for many years with courageous leadership, but basically, what this award stands for is really exercising the best principles of governance and leadership while promoting excellence in public education. I have a side note, an anecdote. The Casby Board, and Ryan, I know you're on the Casby Board, it's a pretty big board, and usually, there's just a whole lot of nominations and people saying, "Well, this board should really get it for this reason," or "This for this reason," but we've been told hands down across the board and all the committees that this was vetted through, that there was no question it was Westminster Public Schools Board of Education. So you should be really proud of that, because that's just an extra feather in your cap. And I know next week in Colorado Springs, you will receive the official award, but tonight, at the end of the business meeting before we head into study session, we do have some cake and punch that'll be in the hallway, and I hope everybody in the room can congratulate our board and have a slice of cake on your way out the door tonight if you're able to stay with us. As I said about the award, what it was for, the one thing I didn't mention is that it also comes with a $2,500 award to the Board of Education to go to a program of your choice, or programs of your choice. And so, just to know with all these people in the audience tonight, don't be surprised at the cake table if you get lobbied, okay, because I see a lot of principals up there. So they're all going to be telling you what you need to be spending that money on, alright? It was three weeks ago tonight, moving on, that the voters of Westminster Public School gave their support to Yes on 4A approving our $9.9 million mill levy override. The initial returns showed a very close vote, kind of a nail-biter, but by the time all the votes were counted, Yes on 4A won by a margin of more than 1,400 votes. It was about 53% to 47%. And the county will be conducting the canvas tomorrow to finalize votes, and we will have official numbers signed by the County Elections Canvas Board at our next meeting. And we also want to recognize some special people, I know a couple are in the audience tonight, but we want to do it right at the December meeting and thank people who really carried a lot of leadership during that election season. So I'd like to thank the voters of our community for placing their trust in us to use resources wisely and acknowledge the people who made the phone calls, knocked on the doors, donated money to the campaign, and talked to their neighbors. This was a very important result for the district and will allow the school district to move forward with many priority projects. And as you know, statewide, the voters rejected the statewide ballot initiative, Amendment 73. So we're very, very happy that once again Westminster is a self-reliant community and takes care of its own. And it is expected this year that lawmakers will once again try to fix the School Finance Act, and we're going to continue to be strong advocates for more equity in the distribution of money, and I'll keep you posted on that. And finally, speaking of government, I'm proud to say that the Colorado State Board of Education agreed to hold off on any changes to the calculations used in setting school and district performance frameworks for the 2019 year. The Colorado Department of Education had proposed changes earlier in October at their meeting with very little input from educators across the state. And we believe that that would have had, it would have resulted in unintended negative consequences. So our district was the first to really grasp the implications of these changes, and in the end, we rallied significant opposition to the proposal. And most of the state superintendents, yours truly included, signed a letter about our position, and I believe that helped carry the day. So at the meeting where we were a couple of weeks ago, the recommendation from CDE had changed to keep things stable for this coming year. And so I think that's a real win for all of us across the state, all districts, but certainly Westminster Public Schools. And I think we carried a lot of credibility in that argument, because even with the obstacles of the accountability system in Colorado, we had exited the clock earlier this year. And finally, because this is the season of gratitude and giving, we have invited the press to an event tomorrow, and I see Heather up there, to Tennyson Knowles, where students are making posters of support and solidarity for kids who lost their school in the Paradise Fire in California. And Tennyson's principal, Heather, is a good friend, I believe of a teacher, right, at the school? And I think the teacher lost her home too, is that correct? Yeah, as well. And I just think that's a lot of love and support to teach our kids early on about the power in giving back and caring about something bigger than themselves. And so congratulations to Tennyson Knowles, and we look forward to some good press tomorrow. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Swanson. Any questions or comments for Dr. Swanson?
One comment, she's being rather humble. She led the charge with the state superintendents to tell the state that they needed to keep things as is, and with the help of Dr. Granham and getting very close to being Dr. Gennigato. Those three led the charge along with the rest of their team and rallied the superintendents. Otherwise, this is something the state would have let fly under the radar, and everybody would have felt the very adverse consequences from a preschooler all the way up to high schooler and every teacher and staff member in the state of Colorado. So a big debt of gratitude goes to them for that.
Thank you for that. Yes, I remember getting that phone call and saying, "Ryan, you need to go talk to Casby right now." So that was good. Can we address the gift or whatever this, that's blocking Max's face from the rest of the audience? Before we get to board comments, because it's bothering me a little bit.
There's a card, I think he should read it.
Dino, you.
Read it.
No, I heard it was, and I defer to my senior board member. Thank you.
Alright, it's addressed to the Board of Education, and it says, "Learn how to open envelopes." And no, I'm not going to do a Kanye. "Westminster Board of Education, I knew you'd get it done. Congratulations, Anita." For those of you who don't know, that's Anita.
Oh, nice.
Now Banning, formerly Roberts, who's a retired teacher from our district. And when she saw the news that the district was off the clock, she was just elated while going through some of her own personal issues. Keep her in your prayers, and a stepson who lost a home in that fire in paradise. She said, "Dino, order a nice flower arrangement and send it to the board and send me the bills." So.
That sounds like her.
And just, that's what it's all about.
Veronica's moving.
Well, and she's been a great supporter, good friend of yours, Dino, but good friend of the district for a long, long time.
Long time, long time.
On the foundation too, prior to her leaving town.
She was the vice president.
Yeah, she, her heart is always.
And even though a marriage last year to an old high school flame took her to Washington, she still stays up with everything around her.
Awesome.
Very nice.
That was very kind of her. Alright, moving on to board discussion, board reports. Board, do you have anything to add?
It seems like we haven't met in, like, summer break, that we had the whole, we've had the whole month off, I think, but we haven't. Just a couple of things. The Veterans Day celebration that I attended at Flynn, it's always a wonderful event, and it was, again, done very, very well, and it's one of my favorites. So hats off to the folks at Flynn for a really nice day. Congratulations too to the team who helped pass our bond and, excuse me, our mill levy. That was really a, as we said many, many times, it was the best-run campaign since the early 90s. And really from, finally, the board took a step back and let dedicated parents and friends of the district run things, and they did a spectacular job, so thank you very much for that. Christine, Nick, Amanda, Fran, Rosie, Matt Duran, I'm sure I'm leaving out a whole bunch, but it was just a job well done. And Max, to your point, and you started saying this back in, I think, May, I remember it during graduation, that if not sooner, how you noticed just a change in the district from staff and teachers and parents and neighbors that you talked to. And you started talking about that in May, and sure enough, you had it pegged from the get-go. So thanks for the positive vibe. You were one of the early, early on who said, "Let's do this." So thank you, and Ryan too, thanks for your leadership. It was really a job well done.
I think what I want to add, and we talk about this all the time, is it's the people who grew up in this district. I was excited to see Ann Groff there, you know, I grew up in Ann's neighborhood, but it was also great to see Christine's parents, who for many, many years were in the district. Christine went through this district, her husband did too. And it's, for us, it's important to get these people back here and helping us in our district, because when we go out into our community and do that, and people see, and you have somebody walk up and says, "I graduated from the school, my kids go to the school now, and I'm indebted into this district to work and help this district," I think that goes a long ways in getting these votes. And I don't know, was this one of the better elections we've had?
Well, we haven't passed a mill levy since 2002, so this was a long time coming. And also, to win by almost 1,500 votes is quite a statement of confidence, I believe.
Try to imagine, we did not pass any state tax or any increase in anything. So the people basically talked and said, "We don't want any tax, state tax to pass, but we want all the local ones." Most of our local taxes pass. So that's telling a lot about our community, saying, "We want to keep it local, we want to make sure that we work with our schools and our special districts, fire districts and everything." So, great, and my hat's off, Christine, to everybody who helped, you know, like Ken said, who helped in this. And it, again, reassures us that we have a great community that we live in, we work in, and we have our school district here. So thank you.
And one thing I'd add, there was a lot of talk before the election that amendment that was, have helped education on the state level was actually interfering with passage of our local mill levy increase. And as you saw, that went down in flames by about 20%. So it was really nice to, again, the people that were working on this that drove it home, that this was about our community and our people, so thanks again to all of you who did that. My other mention, again, like, since we've been off for a month, it's hard to remember, but the fall play that was held here at the high school was a great production. I got to see the, actually, the middle school matinee, because I was out of town for the rest of it, but it was done in the black box, terrific job, can't wait to see what they're doing in the spring. So I just wanted to give kudos to that.
Yeah, I went one night also, and I, really well done, I enjoyed it very much.
Dino, anything?
Just to echo really a lot of what Max said, this was an election about people saying they want their money to stay in their communities where the decisions are made, not the state. I did not support Amendment 73 personally, because it was a very bad amendment. It wasn't about money for education, there were so many poison pills in it that it actually was probably going to wind up costing districts money, and I think the voters saw through that. You know, maybe you get another million and a half dollars, the problem is, they're going to tell you where you have to spend $2 million, and that's not right. So this was a great, it was a great victory for local control. The election certainly brought a referendum against Washington, particularly 1,600 Pennsylvania Avenue. We'll see what happens next. I hope the two sides can figure out how to get along, because there's about 4 million that need that. And I too went and saw the play, and I tend not to like to be in the box. I have issues being in enclosed spaces, but the kids were remarkable, it was very different. It was 16 and 10, I believe, was the title of it, and it was a series of vignettes of really high school life. And it was very hard acting because of what they had to do. Particularly the young lady who was having a conversation with her dog, and there was no actual dog, she was kind of miming it, and she did a fantastic job. Our new theater director did a fantastic job. And it was not one that had the biggest marquee billing, but it had good attendance. They tried some different things with different times in that, brought in middle schoolers, and it was really, it was really a very positive, positive event. Yesterday, we had our monthly Education Foundation meeting, and things are going alright. All organizations in the US right now are watching their portfolios very quickly, or very closely, excuse me, because stocks, bonds, everything is in a bit of flux. So we have good counsel and, you know, we're well-positioned. And it was nice to walk into the room and give the report and say, you know, "We had a good month in the district." So, thank you to everybody. And we also, part of why you haven't seen us for a while, is we attended the annual Einacall Conference in Nashville. And a lot of great collaboration from people all over the United States and Canada, and a couple other parts of Europe, I believe. This is the largest organization where they discuss blended learning. We had a team that was presenting, Jenny Gennigato, Dr. Granham, a couple of our principals. And honestly, of all the sessions I attended, I attended about a dozen, I think it was the hottest room. Everybody was very, very active, very inquisitive, and even after the session, many people stayed and were asking our team more and more questions. But it's very clear that competency-based style of education is the future of education, and we're well ahead of that curve. And the biggest takeaway I had was one of the morning, longer sessions, it was actually somebody who was not an educator, but she came from the medical industry and now works in education. The number-one thing in education is growth, and we need to continue to hammer that with the state, especially when you're dealing with persons who have any sort of challenges, be they poverty, language barriers, social issues, other trauma, all of that. It's growth. If you try to measure somebody by what they can achieve at a set point in time, as opposed to when they're ready to achieve it, you'll absolutely achieve failure, and that's not acceptable. And that's why we are very big proponents of growth in this district, and we'll continue to push the state. We just have to educate them, they're a little behind where we're at, but we'll get them there. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I think it'd be remiss for us not to acknowledge the Chancho Restaurant, for all the volunteers, for who supported the mill and who are out there. Even when we told Don and Donna not to give us any food, that, "Hey, we'll get through this meeting without anything," they would show up with food and feeding the hungry volunteers, and we appreciate that. And everyone, this is where I will plug them, visit their restaurant, because they didn't have to support us that way, and they didn't have to support the volunteers and continue to move that down the line. So it's nice to have a family, a community restaurant that supports local issues, and so I appreciate that greatly. I do want to acknowledge the board in regards to the award we're receiving. I say "we're" receiving that because it's a district award, I think we all agree with that. It's a community award, even though the five of us get to stand up on stage and hold that, it's because of our teachers, our staff, our administration, who make us look good. And you've done a lot of work, and that doesn't go unrecognized. And this board appreciates everything that all of you have done. I think that's one of the reasons why we were able to pass this mill as well. There was a lot of great energy in the community. People want to support education in our community, and that was, that was clear. That was clear when we were knocking on doors and talking to community members. And, you know, you're always going to get those individuals who said, you know, a number of them who didn't want to support any tax increases ever, and that's okay, but they know that we're doing good things in this district, and I thank all of you for that. I would like to also acknowledge, and I know we're doing it in December, but praise in public, the Martinez family for all your support. Grant, especially you, I saw you drawing a lot of those postcards, man, they look good, I think I got yours. I was looking for a zombie eating the 4A, but I got something else, I'm not sure what it was, but I'll talk to your principal about your art program. Also, again, the Chancho family, again, all of you were there in full force, really appreciate that. And seeing you in every meeting and walking, that was great. Also, the Casebolts. Casebolts, their daughter's about to graduate and move on, and as far as a family member of theirs seeing the impact of this funding, that will not happen with them. And so the fact that they were there, knowing that both of their children are out of the district and was still championing this district, that's something that was pretty amazing. And they wanted to make sure that they were part of that, so that's something that was exciting. I'd also like to acknowledge my brother Nick McCoy. He's a little bit less better-looking than I am, but that's alright, that's all subjective. No, but Nick, Nick was voluntold by kin that he was going to be one of the co-chairs of this committee, and Nick, if you know him, has a really hard time telling anyone no, and he took it, and he led with such compassion and grace, and I say grace because there were times where I knew he wanted to reach across and strangle his little brother for ideas or different insight that we wanted to move forward with. But the reality is, you know, Nick saw the bigger picture of what this was going to accomplish for the kids of the district. And so, thank all of you for that, and thank you, district. This is going to be a fun few years to come, and it'll be a lot more work on the board and future boards' plate of looking at how these funds are dispersed. And Mr. Probone, he asked for a document, the sheet that we were passing out, that does the breakdown of how we're spending the funds, and that is available online, but I'll make sure that we get that out there, because we do want, it's the community needs to be involved in every aspect of education, and that means they need to see how we spend our money. That means that they need to take a moment and hold us accountable as a board as well, and I think that's important, and we expect that, and we respect that. And so I want to make sure that that's communicated as well, because as elected officials, you've got to crack the whip on us if we get out of line, so make sure you do that, so thank you. Alright. Audience comments, Veronica?
We don't have any comments.
No comments. Alright, moving on to my favorite part of every board meeting is the educational reports. We have Sunset Ridge Elementary with Dr. Oliver Granham. Please introduce our speaker.
Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Swanson, tonight represents the fifth round of school presentations regarding achievement, results, improvement efforts, and goal commitments for the 2018-19 school year. And by the way, next week marks the beginning of our Scantron testing, where by the beginning of January, we will have a progress check in terms of year two in our Management Pathway Plan. In preparation for tonight's presentations, you've already received in your board packets an executive summary about each school that describes its progress and improvement to date, as well as data regarding student and staff demographics, along with achievement data. Now we will hear from Sunset Ridge Elementary School, led by Principal Roger Verdean, who is currently in his 14th year as principal. Principal 15, even better. Principal Verdean has been at Sunset Ridge that entire time, which is a record for us in this millennium. Prior to serving at WPS, Principal Verdean was an elementary school assistant principal for three years and an elementary classroom teacher for nine years in Aurora Public Schools. One thing you may not know about Principal Verdean is that he served as a volunteer in the Peace Corps for three years as a community developer and an agricultural extension agent in Cape Verde, West Africa. And I know he's looking forward to sharing his school's achievement story tonight. Principal Verdean, please tell your story.
Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Swanson, thank you for giving me the opportunity to share with you our story at Sunset Ridge. A year ago, I presented to the Board of Education, and I shared a video with you highlighting the commitments our school staff had made to each other, to our students, and to our community. Before I share the results of our work last year, I want to review some of those commitments and assure you that those are ongoing commitments, and they guide our work this school year. We continue to work hard to deepen our understandings of CMAS, English Language Arts and Math Tests. We have aligned our expectations with CMAS rubrics, and lessons are created using the CMAS performance descriptors. We routinely consider the depth of knowledge when constructing tasks and questions to challenge our students' thinking. We strategically provide intervention support for our students. Based on data, students are regrouped to ensure individual learning needs are met. Goal-setting and action-planning are routine processes at Sunset Ridge. Along the way, we look for ways to recognize and celebrate our successes. Along the way, we look for ways to recognize and celebrate our successes. Every day, we look for intriguing ways to engage our students in their own learning. We have had great feedback from our Cagan trainings, and CAG instructions are routinely observed in our classrooms. We definitely have high student engagement at Sunset Ridge. Our staff does a great job of working together in professional learning communities. Staff members meet regularly to plan lessons and share ideas. Every month, professional learning teams share data with me, highlighting how our students are performing in reading, writing, and math. In order to learn from each other, staff members take advantage of opportunities to visit each other's classrooms. One key to our success is that Sunset Ridge parents are shown ways to help their children at home. Every student has a home reading goal and a home math goal. Our parents are invited and encouraged to attend parent engagement events. Events like our Summer Bridge Challenge and Math Game Night are very popular with our families. We also encourage our parents to use Empower to monitor the progress of their children. I am happy to report that Sunset Ridge moved back into the performance category for the 2018-2019 school year. We earned a total of 54.3 out of a possible 100 points. For academic achievement, we earned the Approaching Expectations rating. For academic growth, we earned the Meet Expectation rating. We tested all of our 3rd through 5th grade students, and we met expectation for accountability participation. In the fall of 2017, Dr. Swanson set a performance challenge for all schools. Sunset Ridge Performance Challenge goals for ELAA and math were set at 725 Scaled Score Points. This fall, our staff was very excited to celebrate our school results. In math, we achieved 725.8 points, and in ELA, we scored 729.2 points. I am very happy to report that Sunset Ridge met the 2018 Performance Challenge for ELA and math achievement. On this slide, you can see the data trend for Sunset Ridge for the past four years. These are the four years of Park and CMAS testing. On the English Language Arts this year, we had an eight-point increase for students meeting or exceeding expectations. We also posted our highest-growth percentile for math, the 52nd percentile. This represents a 10 percentage point increase from 2017. We are very proud of all of our students. Here, you can see how some of our student groups performed last year on CMAS compared to performance in 2017. Growth in math from each one of our disaggregated groups equaled or exceeded the state average for all students. I am very proud of the history of performance at Sunset Ridge. I give all credit for our success to our teachers, staff members, students, and community. Some of the Sunset Ridge staff members are here tonight. On this slide, I am sharing the seven-year history of state accreditation ratings for Sunset Ridge. I am also sharing the accountability ratings for two Adams 12 schools that are located within a mile radius of Sunset Ridge. We share a northern border with Rocky Mountain Elementary School, and we share an eastern border with Federal Heights Elementary School. As you can see, Sunset Ridge has a distinguished reputation for producing very positive outcomes for students over many years. We have set CMAS goals for the 2018-2019 school year. For math, we've set a goal for 728 Scaled Score Points with a growth percentile at the 55th percentile. And for ELA, 731 is our goal for achievement in ELA with a growth percentile goal in the 55th percentile. And for science, we've set a goal of 532 Scaled Score Points. As part of our Unified Improvement Plan, we have identified a pathway to support our continued success. In writing, our focus for primary grades is guided by Right From the Beginning and Beyond, and our focus for intermediate grades is driven by the CMAS Scoring Guides for Writing. In reading, our focus for primary is DIBELS, Early Literacy Skill Attainment. In our intermediate grades, we are using the Marzano Assessment Items for English Language Arts to confirm our students' mastery of reading skills. In math, we have been learning about seven high-yield maths routines to strengthen our students' number sense. Art Droitar works with our staff to promote problem-solving, strategies, and math-critical thinking. We have 42 students involved in after-school tutoring, four days a week, in reading and We have also identified other specific actions that are aligned to our Unified Improvement Plan goals. I will let you read the highlights. I would like to conclude my report with a few comments on our new social skills initiative, Random Acts of Kindness. At Sunset Ridge, we are all about showing kindness to each other. Using resources from the Random Acts of Kindness Foundation, our teachers explicitly teach students how to be kind to each other, and the importance of showing kindness to everyone. Kindness is one of those happiness paradoxes, meaning we become happier by showing other people and making other people happy. Showing and receiving kindness has a positive effect upon personal relationships, leads to better health, and research shows boosts performance. Through a series of leveled lessons, Sunset Ridge students are learning 12 kindness concepts. We give our students many opportunities to apply these kindness concepts, and we celebrate with our students when we notice expressions of kindness. An example of our school-wide Random Acts of Kindness project is our CUBS program. CUBS stands for Children Understanding Buddy Strength. Every primary classroom at Sunset Ridge is buddied with an intermediate classroom. Through CUBS, our students get the opportunity to share kindness with each other while working together to form positive relationships. Teachers and students are doing a great job sharing kindness across our school. I am confident that this work will have lasting effects on all of us. Thank you again for the opportunity to share with you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you.
Lights out.
He hasn't noticed it.
Oh, God!
I have so many questions.
Order, order! Roger, we've got so many sink-or-swim questions for you right now.
Yeah. Okay.
That was all in love. That was our support for you.
I feel it.
You know, I will tell you, you're the one school ongoing, and I even knew this before I joined the board, through your leadership and your staff there, that I've never really had to worry about Sunset. I've always saw you guys as a pillar of excellence, and which is why we can have fun with you. I think you have a long enough relationship with the McCoy family that you can take a jab. But we have a number of questions for you. Are you ready for this? You did tell me in Nashville that you said Dino and Ryan ask really tough questions all the time, so I hope you're ready for this.
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Here we go, I'm ready.
Okay, Joe, Kenny, Max, you want to start?
Uh-oh. Well, first of all, I want to say that you're just getting along swimmingly with your staff and students. And your scores are really off the deep end this year, so...
Boom!
Pun intended.
You know, just keep swimming.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Joe.
Who's next?
You guys have any questions? I do have questions.
I was going to say, you've been there long enough. I don't think we're wet behind the ears anymore, so...
Right!
So I do have a serious question for you. So I'll start there. Okay. When you were talking about parent engagement, and I've always, I mean, I've seen the parent engagement at Sunset for a long time, and you talked about the reading goals that you set with the parents and the students?
Yep.
As well as the math goals. Can you go a little bit more in-depth with that for me?
Sure. So all of our students have a reading goal based on, in their classroom, and those are based on levels. So it could be numbers of minutes to read at home, it could be a number of books to read, and they need to complete the reading and fill out for whatever the teacher needs in terms of accountability. It could be the parent signs off, or maybe they're filling out a reflection form. So each teacher sets their own goal, and then we recognize kids at the end of the semester. We have a Semester Awards Assembly, and we give out awards for the kids that have met that reading goal. And then all classrooms also have a math goal, and those math goals are usually based on a math facts fluency goal in terms of being able to memorize and learn their math facts. And every kid will have one, and we have a kid back here, Grant, he can probably even come up here and hopefully tell you what his goal is, and hopefully he's on his way to meeting that goal, because they only have about three weeks left.
Well, he was coming down.
Perfect. See? I have more students like that meeting the goal than we have kids who don't, which is awesome.
So how do you keep your staff motivated? I mean, year in, year out, you guys are moving it forward, you're producing it, and, you know, what do you guys do to rally your team?
Yeah, good question. You know, I think that the magic at Sunset Ridge, you know, lives within the community that we've built. A lot of us have been there a long time. You know, I'm not the only one who's been there, you know, 15 years. There were a number of people that were there when I came and have stayed in all those 15 years that I've been there, and others, you know, that I hired in my first couple of years that have, you know, have stayed with us, you know, and we've stayed together as a team, and it really does, you know, success breeds success. And when you do have a team that likes to work together and that enjoys, you know, coming to work together, it's easy to stay. We don't have a lot of turnover. Most of the times when I do have turnover, you know, I have student teachers that we have just either had in the fall or the spring, and, you know, with help of HR, you know, we're getting them letters of intent, thank you, Mr. Ledey, you know, very quickly. You know, we put a letter of intent with a teacher in February of last year, who's now a first-year teacher at Sunset Ridge.
So, Roger, you talked about working with the parents to use Empower. So tell me some obstacles you've met with that. Is it been an easy challenge, or has it been real tough to get the parents to work with it?
Yeah, you know, it's not easy to get our parents always to look at Empower. Our best communicators for Empower are our kids, right? And if you look at an Empower report, that might say how many parents have actually looked at Empower. It might be pretty small, but I can guarantee you that our parents, a lot of times, will be looking at Empower through their kid's account, because they'll say, hey, you know what, show me what's going on. So the kid will log in under their account, and they can then see what they're doing. So a lot of our kids share with their students or with their parents, you know, what they're doing in Empower. In 3, 4, 5, we have Empower screens up a lot. You know, we have all interactive TVs, you know, I go into classroom and I see Empower up, because, you know, we're looking at it, we're entering things in in real time. So kids do know what's there, especially in 3, 4, 5. It's K1, 2, it's more of an uphill challenge, but we continually work on, you know, having our kids take ownership, set goals based on things that they need to learn to go to the next higher level.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes. DIBELS, what does it stand for? Oh, goodness! What? Dynamic Indicator of Basic Early Literacy Skills.
Nice!
I can't believe I got that question. Would you like a more complex one? No, that was as hard as it could get. Okay. So, my whole time, really, there have been two or three constants in the district, you, Cindy, and Shannon. And you're just kind of, you've stayed put there. Thank you. I truly believe that part of the success comes from having stability and leadership, and we're seeing it grow in many of our other schools over time, which is really good. I think we have a really good cadre of principals in our district right now. But you're often called upon to mentor new and incoming principals. What are some of the lessons you have for them, and what are some of the things you're learning from them? So, you know, when you're a new principal, your eyes are wide open, and you're looking at what everybody else is doing. And it's really easily to get yourself bogged down by saying, wow, I got to do that, and I need to do that, and I see what they're doing, I need to do that. And as I was talking to one of my principal colleagues, actually, just at the beginning of this meeting, I said, you got to pick a finite set of things that you're going to do well. Doing everything at this level, you know, this thin level, is not going to get you anywhere. And you just have to know, even people like myself, who have been doing this for a long time, I look at what other people are doing, and I say, wow, I can't believe they're doing this at this level, and how well they're doing this over there. But I know in my heart, and I know at Sunset Ridge, you know, we're doing these things, and we're doing these things really well. And you just have to tell yourself and remind yourself that you pick the things that you believe are going to be the best things for your kids, and stick to those guns, regardless of what, you know, comes this way, these things are your constants. And the other things, if you get to them, that's great, but don't water stuff down to do everything.
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
Back to the water theme, all right.
Way to feed into it.
I know. That good? So, other than luxuriating in a body of water, what are you doing well? I appreciate that, thank you. No, I said, what are you doing well? Oh, what am I doing well?
Just take the compliment, Roger.
I thought you said you were doing well. I was ready to walk off. What are we doing well? You know, my staff is behind me here, so, you know, they know that I'm about data. If you saw the first iteration of this presentation, there wasn't a picture in it, right? It was all data. The whole thing was, you know, charts and things that I was going to talk about, data, because that's what I'm about. My staff will know that. They meet with me a lot, they share a lot of data with me. I believe, you know, we make data-informed decisions. You know, we look at our data, we make changes based on, you know, how our kids are doing, we make changes based on things that we're learning from our data. So I think that's one thing that we do well, and then we transfer what I ask our teachers to do to the kids. So if I ask our teachers to set goals, they're asking our kids to set goals. If I'm asking our teachers to do action plans and share data, they're doing the same thing. So I model for them what I expect them to do and model with our kids. Is that what you were doing in the pool, modeling? That's what I was doing. Clearly not, but somehow my picture got taken. That's all I have.
All right, any other? Roger, we appreciate it. Sunset, always a pleasure to hear your report. Thank you for your time. And thanks for your smiling, being a good sport.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you, Principal Verdean, for being such a good sport. And now, we'll hear from Principal Elaine Dibbledox, who joined Westminster Public Schools in July of 2015. This is her first year as principal at FM Day Elementary School, and indeed, it is her first year as principal. However, prior to this school year, she served admirably for three years as a culturally and linguistically diverse education coordinator across this district. Before coming to Westminster Public Schools, Principal Dibbledox served in Denver Public Schools as an elementary assistant principal, an instructional coach, and as a classroom teacher. Principal Dibbledox has several degrees, endorsements, and qualifications focused on language learning, but an interesting point to note is that Principal Dibbledox is multilingual in English, Spanish, and German, and even a bit of Japanese thrown in. Principal Dibbledox, please come forward and share FM Day's achievement story.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson. Someone once said that there's a difference between interest and commitment. When you're interested in doing something, you do it only when it's convenient. But when you're committed to something, you accept no excuses and only results. As you can see from this picture, I committed to teaching even before I could read. And every day when I step into FM Day, I felt honored to work alongside a staff that is dedicated. If things get hard, I have to... have 355 little faces that remind me the importance and joy of this calling. In our school performance framework, we rated us improvement with 52.7%. We were only 0.3% from being a performance school. Most of the score came from our growth, 71.2%, and the rest, 25%, came from our achievement. As you can see, FM Day experienced exceptional growth. This exceeded not only the district's already impressive growth, but also the state's. If you look at our literacy scores, you can see there are students grew 60%. Our English-language learners, who compose more than half our population, scored 5% higher than the district's average and 13% higher than the state's average. In math, we saw some of our biggest growth from the previous year. As you can see, in 2017, our overall growth was 30%, and in 2018, it was 55.5%. That is a 25.5 percentage point gain in just one year. In addition, our English-language learners went from 29% to 57% in the same timeframe. FM Day has been on an upwards path in the last three years, going from 35.4% in 2016 to 52.7% in 2018. This year, we're working hard to exceed our performance from previous years. Even though we don't want to lose momentum in literacy, when we analyzed our data, we saw that math was our biggest challenge. We have set our growth goal at 55% to continue that growth across the content areas, and we're aiming at increasing our points by five so that we can jump into the performance category. So, how are we doing this? We're doing it by embodying the district's learning model. At FM Day, we continue to emphasize Cagan Strategies, and through Marzano, and the culturally and linguistically diverse professional development, we are focusing on writing clear and concise learning objectives and lessons. We have also restructured our response to intervention team, which allows us to target supports to students in a more effective manner. With CBS, any student that is new to our school has his or her records evaluated by our blended team. We also continually assess and monitor our students, not only in English, but also in Spanish, to ensure correct placement and progress. In terms of leadership, at FM Day, we take a shared leadership approach. So, teachers often facilitate professional development, they also mentor their peers, they co-teach to meet the needs of all our students. And with Springboard Tutoring, Math Wizards, and Volunteers of America, we give students a more individualized attention. Partnerships, like the one that we have with Denver University, allow us to collaborate and share ideas with other schools across the metro area. Leadership also includes a partnership with our incredible community. This picture, you know, it's dark, was taken at 11 o'clock at night in the parking lot of our school, as parents were finishing their float for our first-ever participation in the homecoming parade, and that's the finished product. Parents also took turns volunteering their time for our book fair for a week. They also fed our teachers every day during parent-teacher conferences, and also helped provide safe activities for our students during Friday night. Our community liaison has worked hard at improving continuing education for parents, and has also brought enrichment activities for our students. Our bilingual program is what makes us unique, and that's why I love this school. In a society that is becoming increasingly global, our bilingual students are ahead of the game because they can communicate with over 435 million people that speak Spanish across the world. Knowing a second language expands our students' horizons, it also improves their cognitive abilities. As a second-language learner myself, I know the power and influence of a school that sees cultural differences in knowing a second language as an asset rather than a deficit. Una persona bilingüe vale por dos. Loosely translated, it means that a person that knows two languages has two souls. To support our students, we have bilingual licensed teachers in grades pre-K through 4th grade, and we also have a Spanish Title I interventionist. We recently partnered with the Global Ambassadors Program to recruit native speaking Spanish teachers for our school. This summer, we also trained our teachers in no-nonsense nurturing, which has cut suspension rates by more than half this year already. We also participated in a workshop called Trauma-Informed Practices to provide the emotional support that our students need. Instead of, in terms of learner-centered classrooms, this year, we had student-led conferences where students discuss their data notebooks and progress with parents. Our special-needs students also spend more time in mainstream classrooms. And once a month, students participate in Friday Roundup, which showcases students' achievement, effort, and attendance. None of us can do great things alone, but together, we can do wonderful things. Therefore, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Learning Services Director, my fellow principals that have offered continuous support, the incredible staff that I have, and the FM Day community for their support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
We'd add your own photo there at the end, all right. Board, yeah, board questions, comments?
Saw a lot of notes being spotted there.
Just curious. Coming into a school that's been through four or five principals in the last 10 years, eight, and I know there's a couple of big sets of shoes, though, to fill as well along the way. With an upward-trending path, but with a, with a community that's had some volatility also over the years, how, how are you, talk to me about picking up where Mr. Boucher left off and continuing while also charting your own course and keeping your teachers and families and everybody focused on the bigger picture?
I think a lot of the credit for that growth is due to the staff because despite the changes in leadership, they still manage to be a close-knit community. It really feels like a family. And I wanted to make sure that when I came into the building, I honored their work. Also, take the leadership, shared leadership approach quite seriously because they are wonderful resources for our students. They know our families really well, they know what has worked well in the past. So, just allowing them a platform to share those ideas and discuss them because it's not just a me show. We always have to do everything and keep every single decision, and we always ask ourselves if that's what's best for students. I think what has helped too is that being a second-language learner, just having that connection with the community has been very helpful because it provides them a voice. I have similar backgrounds, so that also allows them to come. I have a lot of parents that come and just sometimes just want to vent about their personal lives or just things because they can do it in their language. And that's something wonderful because it's intimidating to come to a school and not speak the language and talk about the concerns that you have for your child. So, honoring the strengths that parents bring and knowing what they're capable, and making sure that they feel that, just like the staff feels like a home, that that is also their home.
I like that comment. Honoring the strengths that the parents bring. Like you've been doing this for a long time. That was a good comment.
Like you didn't miss a beat at all.
No.
No.
Can you talk, you talked about, when you're reviewing the results, you have blended teams that review the results, I'm assuming the data, the student data?
Yes, and the blended team has been very active. Not only the blended team, the building leadership team, and every single teacher has taken a leadership with ideas. So, one of the things that is important that when you come into a school as a second-language learner, you already come with something. You have to look at the student from what they already bring and not what they're lacking. So, our blended services team, we have a psychologist that is bilingual, our speech therapist is also bilingual, and some of our teacher representatives are there. So, we look at their records that they bring, either from Mexico or Central America, to make sure that we're not missing anything because sometimes the language might not be there, but the content knowledge is there. So, we take a look carefully at those records. We also have interviewed parents because parents are our first source of knowledge and what has gone when students have interrupted schooling. So, we also do that. Our CLD teachers have been incredible because they have come through many years of records to clean them up, to make sure that we've had home languages correct, that we've placed students correct, that we're taking all tests into account.
You also mentioned there's co-teaching transpiring. Can you just give me an example of what that is?
Our CLD teachers is a great example because we, 90, 95% of our students are Hispanic, and more than half, close to 60% of our students are second-language learners. So, to reach not only the students that need language, but we also have to monitor the students that have been exited out of the program. The best way to reach them is when they go in and participate and plan and co-teach with our mainstream classroom teachers. So, that also allows the mainstream classroom teachers to build their capacity because we have to build that capacity and experience with second-language learners. So, working as a team and approaching every single student, not only from the language, which many of our students, even though they're English speakers, need that language, but also from the content. So, they do do that. And our coaches and our title teachers also push in into the classrooms instead of pulling students out.
Are you still doing the immersion program at FM Day?
Yes, and it's a transitional native language instruction. And the, the way it works, for it to be a true bilingual program, we would have to also sustain an English track. Right now, we don't have the population to do that, so we're trying to ensure that our transitional native language program is solid. So, that is why we have Spanish speakers in all grades, all the way through 4th grade. So, with that said, we can maybe in the future look at really making it a bilingual track, but we need for that, we also need the same amount of students that are just English speakers so that they can also learn Spanish. And our students in this transitional native language instruction program are exited around 2nd grade, but we still provide support in Spanish when they need it. And our Title I interventionists can provide also additional reading support in Spanish for those students in 4th and 5th grade.
And you said you have a parent enrichment programs at the school. Can you?
We have a wonderful community liaison this year, and she provides nutrition classes. She's starting a dance class, too. She provides English classes for our parents. And that's a great resource because I can, they meet at the school in the morning, so I can also talk to parents about some of their concerns, or with coffee with the principal, or during PTAs. So, they also express some interest in, for instance, things like discipline. So, we'll bring some workshops about how to establish good routines at home, how to discipline your child, how to look beyond elementary and into college.
That's great. Any other questions or comments?
I have one for Dr. Granham. Being the oldest member of the board in terms of service, but certainly not nearly as old as Mr. Vadeen, as I recall, when I was coming in, FM Day was receiving federal TIG money. Were they one of the schools and/or T-DIP?
They were one of the five elementary schools that were identified in 2010, so they were one of those schools, yes.
Okay. And are there any of those monies still lingering within the school?
Those funds were expended in the time period allotted for that particular grant.
And it looks like?
And well.
Yes, I will say, from Mr. Anderson's leadership, all the way to Ms. Dibbledox, and through an amazing staff who's weathered a lot of storms, my hat's off to all of you. Truly, truly, yes, applaud them. They deserve it. I mean, there was a time we destabilized that school with the notion of a K8 partnership with Scott that didn't quite work out so well. And it's nice to see that that money has gone to good use, and it's nice to see the scores and the achievement and the growth doing what it's doing because, as I recall when I started, they were in the red. Otherwise, they wouldn't have received that money. But a lot of other schools outside of our district who've received similar monies are still in the red.
That is correct.
So, you're all a model for what my 8th-grade science teacher called "stick-to-it-ivity", so keep it up.
All right. We look forward to watching you grow in that role. It was great to watch you on the, I think it was your first day bringing the community in, and I tried to talk to you, but every parent wanted your ear, and you provided that. So, I look forward to seeing you continue to move the school forward. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like to comment that, you know, I tell the staff a lot that there are great teachers, and then there are Westminster Public Schools teachers. There are great principals, and then there are Westminster Public Schools principals. And Elaine has definitely in her, in her tenure here in the district, shown that she's a Westminster Public Schools leader, but she also has a sense of humor. So, at the back-to-school barbecue, there was a little dance activity, line dancing going on. And then, at the showcase the other night, I just couldn't even hold a straight face. So, you saw a little bit of that sense of humor in here, but she's, she's not all business like you just heard.
All right.
Thank you, Principal Dibbledox.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to our business items of the evening. Mr. Kirkleday with Personnel Matters.
And if you've noticed, no one is leaving at this particular point. Usually, you clear the crowd.
Empty the house.
Take a photo.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson, I've prepared for you a personnel report containing items 1.0, 3.0, and 5.0 for your consideration and approval.
Thank you. Board, do we have a motion?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead. Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to approve Personal Matters as presented on items 1.0, 3.0, and 5.0.
We got a motion in a second. Any comments? No comments. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chunchu.
Yes.
Mr. David Ek.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
I'm abstaining because I have a nephew that's on this list, and again, it comes back to a kid who's coming back to his community where his mother graduated from, so I'm proud to have him here.
So, what you're saying is being hired in spite of you.
I actually got hired because I was here, so.
And Mr. Valenti, or I'm sorry, Mr. McQuaid.
Aye.
Mr. Valenti.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to Ms. Sandy Neese for the audit, and I believe we're just receiving it, not hearing about it just yet until...
No, not yet. The auditors are here, but they're not yet. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Swanson. Tonight, you have before you the district's fiscal audit report, also known as the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Colorado State statute requires that the annual audit be conducted of all funds by an independent auditor each fiscal year. EDM Bailey is the current district's auditing firm to assist the district in completing this report. Accompanying the report is a management letter in which the auditing firm provides suggestions and procedural or process improvements if needed. The goal of the district of an independent auditor is to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements of the district are free of material misstatements. The district's audit provides an overview and analysis of financial activities for the year ending June 30, 2019. the year ending June 30, 2018. At this time, the school district is in good financial standing. It is recommended by administration that the Board of Education accept the annual audit report and management letter for the June 30, 2018 audit as presented.
We have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education receive the annual audit report and management letter for the June 30, 2018 audit.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments?
Just one. Sandy, I want, I want everybody to know what it really takes to get an audit that, and how hard your group has to work to make sure we get no findings in an audit and that we come out of that clean. So I want to tell you thank you to you and your group for doing this because it's huge to get this, to get a good audit that comes out because it's part of us being transparent and putting our, our budgets and our, and how we spend our money out there. So thank you to everyone who worked.
Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho?
Yes.
Mr. Davidak?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valenti?
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education, Westminster Public Schools, an advanced ed accredited organization, will be Tuesday, December 11, 2018, at 7:30 PM. The regular meeting will be held in the lecture hall of Westminster High School. Notices of meetings are posted in the window of the main entrance of Westminster High School and on board docs 24 hours prior to each meeting. Veronica, the time is now 7:44, and we are adjourned. As mentioned, please join us for CAKE.